Good afternoon and welcome to our Board of Commissioners work session. This June 24th, 2025. We do have two presentations that will be brought before the Board of Commissioners. Both will be brought by our Finance Director, Bill Volkman, and I'll turn things over to him for him to queue up our first presentation, which will be with respect to Truist Park and the Battery.
Our first update is going to be regarding our partnership with the Braves and the Truist Park update. This is actually going to be a tag team effort between Finance, the Braves, as well as Public Safety. So we're going to run through the financial aspect of this first, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mike Plant to give the Braves update. So we always like to start off with this because we always like to look back in time to say, what was the original projections back in 2015 when this was first contemplated? So the column that says 2015 projections, you'll notice at the very bottom, always contemplated using $6.4 million of general fund revenue to support the debt service on the stadium. And I shared with you a milestone a couple of years ago that we had surpassed that, meaning that we were no longer using general fund tax dollars to support the debt service. And I can report again today that those numbers continue to improve. So what I put on this slide for you is a comparison to '23 and '24. And at the very bottom of that, you'll notice that not only did we not use $6.4 million in '23 or '24, we actually generated a positive to the general funds operations. So in 2023, we generated almost $1.5 million that positively impacted the general funds operations in addition to covering the debt service requirements on the stadium bonds. In 2024, those numbers further improved to generating $3 million of positive gain to the general fund. This goes to show the partnership that we have with the Braves and that was contemplated back in 2014, 2015, has continued to improve as the investment has continued to grow. And then this is also a breakdown of the different revenue sources that we use to go through this to fund the debt service. So at the very top, you're going to see the annual debt service of roughly $22.4 million, and the breakdown of how we fund that each year. And we do that through the Cumberland Special Service District 1, which is a $3 room night tax on the hotels within the district; the Cumberland Special Service District 2, which is a property tax levied on commercial properties within the special district; a rental car tax; a hotel motel tax that is actually collected countywide, as well as the annual payment from the Braves at $6.1 million. And just as we walk through those alone, before we even consider the property tax that is generated by the Battery that goes into the general fund, that netted to a $1 million gain for the general fund. But if you add the $1.9 million of property tax the Battery pays, that generates $3 million net positive to the general fund. Any questions on this slide? No, very good. Okay, so with this, we also like to talk about, you know, the impact that it has to the overall area. The property values and revenue impacts since 2014 through 2024. So in 2014, the Battery consisted of four parcels with a taxable value of just about $5 million. At the end of 2024, that same area included 56 parcels with a combined taxable value of $577 million. That value increased from 2023 to 2024 by $49 million. And those are continuing to increase as we move into 2025. So we look forward to next year's update to provide you that continued increase as we move forward as projects become completed within the area. There are other property tax benefits. In addition to the county who receives revenue from this development, the Board of Education receives $4.3 million of taxes annually, as well as the Cumberland Community Improvement District, who received just over $794,000 of taxes. And then in addition to this, we do have some additional general fund benefits. We have occupation tax, liquor by the drink, as well as SPOSS, which is generated from the businesses within the Battery area. Any questions on this slide? Very good, okay. Okay, this is a breakdown that we want to share because, again, this is a story about the county's partnership, but also the other beneficiaries of this partnership. So we do want to walk through some of this. The sales tax is one of our biggest components. So obviously, sales tax cannot be used to fund the debt service. This is for capital projects through our SPOSS program. The county, as well as the Board of Education, receives a share of that SPOSS program, and then the state receives 4% on sales tax. So this is a quick breakdown of the recipients for 2024, dating back to 2020. If you look at the far right, the total allocation of revenues for these revenue sources, which is sales and use tax, liquor by the drink, occupation tax, hotel motel tax, for just those hotels in the Battery, generated just over $28 million that is divided between the county, the Board of Education, and the state. The county's portion of that was $7.2 million. The Board of Education was just over $4 million, and the state is $16.7 million. So in that one-year period, in this five-year history, the total revenue generated from this development is over $112 million between these three partners. Any questions on this slide? Very good. Okay. And then this is a similar way of showing this, but I just wanted to give you a little bit more detailed breakdown of the revenues. So we talked about the general fund component, but at the very top of this, you'll see county property taxes. Within the county's general fund, yes, we did generate property taxes, but also so did the fire fund. So the county actually received $2.6 million in 2024 from the development of the Battery, which does support our general fund and fire fund operations. We did receive $2.2 million of hotel motel taxes from the hotels located simply within the Battery, and then occupation tax of just over $400,000, liquor by the drink of $1.1 million, and then again, SPOSS revenue of just over $4 million, for a total earnings of just over $10.5 million in 2024. Okay? And then our other partners, as we go through this, again, as county has partnered with the Braves, there are other beneficiaries, including the Board of Education, which, again, received property tax revenue of 4.3 and sales tax revenue of just over 4, for a total revenue of $8.3 million in 2024. And the Cumberland Community Improvement District, as we said, $749,000 of tax revenue. The state, $16.7 million. So again, total breakdown of all of these three entities, $36.4 million, and that does not include the additional $6.1 million of annual contribution from the Braves. Any questions on this slide? Yes, Chair?
Bill, I just have a clarifying question on a prior slide.
Sure.
The special service districts that are going towards debt service, I'm assuming those don't encompass the Battery?
So they do. So it is very similar to the Cumberland Improvement District. The boundaries are very similar. They are separately created, and they are only taxed on commercial properties for the ones that pay property tax. So, for example, the Cumberland Special Service District 2 has a millage levied on commercial property taxes within the district, those that benefit from the development itself, and they agree to pay that property tax to help support this investment. And then the hotel motel $3 room night fee is also only located within the district, but the boundaries are very similar to the Cumberland Improvement District.
Okay.
And they pay a $3 room night fee that also goes to support this annual debt service.
Okay, so when we look at the amount for the property tax from Special Service District 2, it's broken out beyond the blue line?
Yes, ma'am.
The general fund property tax paid by Battery property. So are you pulling that out of the Special Service District?
That is correct. So when I talk about the property taxes that is paid, those are at the very bottom of this slide here. That is the general fund component, so that does not include
Thank you.
the Cumberland Special Service District.
I appreciate you clarifying.
Yes, that's a very good question. So we always like to identify those separately.
That's right, because there's a separate.
Very good, yeah. They're restricted for different purposes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Great question. Any other questions on that? Great. Okay, well, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mike Plant to give the Braves update, and then we'll have our Director-Register come up and provide the public safety update.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Thanks for the time to give you a brief update. And I think Bill hit all of the highlights on the financials. But just add a couple of things, highlights for us. The $134 million was generated by the 35 restaurants and entertainment tenants that we have inside just the Battery boundaries. And what's important about that is it's showing some sustainability. It's very close to the number that we had in 2023. So the millions of people that come, obviously every year, are continuing to come to the Battery and our games. You know, I remember back in 2013 or 14, there was an article written that said, "Are the Braves ever going to do the mixed-use development now that the ballpark was approved?" We now have 3 million square feet that are owned and operated at the mixed-use development, which does not include Truist Park. So I think we've proven the fact that we definitely have delivered on the mixed-use development and are here to stay for a long, long time. One of the things that helps bring a lot of those numbers and the impact, the millions of people there, are that we're producing 375 events a year, and that includes our games, concerts at the Roxy, and a lot of the other activation events we do to constantly just continue to drive people to the Battery. Proud to say also that 74% of the fans and visitors come from outside Cobb. So, you know, we are not taking money from, the vast majority of money, from inside Cobb and just moving around Cobb. It is new tax revenue coming, 3/4 of it from outside the county. And then lastly, even though it's only eight years for us, we've put in the last two years a total of about $40 million of capital improvements that we funded. The majority of it, some of it came from the Capital Reserve Fund. But looking at, you know, wear and tear again, when you have a lot of people coming through, both the ballpark and the Battery, we're definitely making improvements and definitely make sure that we are continuing to make it look nice and inviting and safe and secure. Do I need to work this? I got you. Am I screwing this up? Nope. Okay, a couple of highlights on our giving back to the community again. And one of the things that we're definitely proud to do through our foundation. I won't read all of these, but I think a couple of them deserve mention. One of them we just announced recently was the Ryan Park $800,000 investment that we're making to the park with batting cages and some upgrades to the fields. And I know Monique is very happy about that. Will have a great impact on the youth in that area. We invested $370,000 in 19 nonprofit organizations that are either in Cobb or serving Cobb through our grants program. Provided $165,000 investment for Habitat Humanity. We built a house for a public employee in Austell this year with 900 volunteers supporting that. Give Our Schools A Hand, still an annual fund that we are sponsoring. The Smyrna Public Safety Foundation, impacting students. Warrior Alliance at the Battery, 3,000 veterans were served in 2024. 21,000 pounds of food to the Home Plate Project. Distributions in Austell and Marietta. Supported the Cobb County Safety Village, and a number of other different grants that we have provided and organizations we've supported. And then coming in 2025, in about a month after the All-Star Game, Truist Securities, the 250,000-square-foot headquarter building, will start employing over up to 1,000 employees. They'll all be in by the end of this year. We acquired 34 acres in Pennant Park, another 763,000 square feet across the 75 Interstate. And so we are now the owners and operators of that development, and we have some future plans that we're working on to increase opportunities over there for those tenants. Shake Shack opens, new restaurant everyone's aware of probably from different travels in America. So they're a big addition to our lineup. Walk-ons, we just did the grand opening yesterday, another addition to the Braves lineup. The Henry Towers, which are across from the Omni, those have started going vertical. Our plan is to complete the pedestrian walkway bridge between the Henry and the Battery, which would be between Omni and Comcast before opening day next year. One of our goals, again, is around the perimeter, alleviate all the pedestrian and vehicle conflict. Obviously, from a safety standpoint, that's something that's incredibly important to us and everyone else. And then All-Star Week, we're inside four weeks. I know we're ready to go, you're going to hear from Mike in a bit. I know county has been incredibly supportive from this, and I appreciate all of you certainly doing that for us. It will have a huge global audience, and I'll give you a couple of numbers in a little bit. But again, the impact for the county, we believe, Bill and I, that you'll see bigger, greater, and more impactful numbers next year when we give this report. I won't guarantee anything about the postseason, but that's always an uptick for all of us. So keep your fingers crossed and say your prayers. And our team, we've got a lot of talent there. We just need to keep working hard and trying to win some games here down the stretch, so. Am I doing this as well? Yeah, just an overview of the Battery for us. There's a great picture. Oh! So when I say pictures say a thousand words, you know? So 12 short years, I know we're incredibly proud of being able to produce all that and deliver it. And I've said many times to many people in many places, excuse me, this is still the best, greatest example of public-private partnership. So hats off to Cobb, the police, the fire, everyone we work with here, Jackie and our whole team. You guys all have your fingers on this, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, it was a very impressive video, and it's good to see those numbers continue to get better every year and to see the expansion of the site, the activation of the site. It's been very impressive.
Thank you.
Are you going to talk through this slide?
Well, I'm just going to, yeah, last one, just highlight the All-Star Game schedule. You know, this represents really kind of the big events. There are lots of smaller ancillary events that are happening around Cobb and metro Atlanta. But the big events start on Friday through Tuesday, and you can see them on the schedule. There's about 3,700 media from all over the world that would be attending. There's the games, the Home Run Derby and the All-Star Game will be broadcast in over 200 countries around the world. And just MLB, I mean, we'll have obviously lots of numbers to share post-event. But for an example, MLB alone takes up 20,000 hotel nights, and that's just their delegation. Doesn't include media, doesn't include guests. The All-Star Village at the Cobb Galleria, which I think starts, the build-out starts next week. The five days should easily exceed 60,000 to 70,000 people total that will be attending All-Star Village. So, and it's really, it's, I think, a testament to, again, the Battery, the county, working together, Galleria. Everything is very localized in a walkable environment, obviously with the games and All-Star Village. So we're happy to see this all come together, and we're ready to go.
Very good. Are we on track to see that bridge open for All-Star Game?
I heard this morning, at least Drew, I think, yeah.
Okay.
I think Drew, you took the wrapping off of it, and the painting started going on. Yeah, it's looking really great.
All right, excellent.
Yep. My pleasure to turn this over to Mike. And again, I can't say enough about his whole team and Cobb PD and Fire. Just incredible working relationship. And they help us get this done.
They've done a great job.
So, yep, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mike before we transition?
No questions, but you know, I have to comment. Two things. Keep beating the Mets. Go after the Phillies. And let's have another World Series. Go Braves!
Go Braves. Well, Madam Chair, Commissioners, County Manager, pleasure to be here this afternoon to give you a short update on how we have planned to support the MLB All-Star Game. You can see from the schedule, it's pretty active from the 11th to the flagship event of the All-Star Game. And what we've done in our planning modules is we've segregated each event to make sure that we have planned appropriately, right? For each event, from a public safety standpoint and from, you'll see as we get into the summary of the plan, there's been many, many entities, government and our community stakeholders that's been involved in this. When we look at the planning summary, since the announcement, there's been seven structured planning meetings held. And when I say seven structured planning meetings, that's where we bring everybody together. There's nine different entities that we'll talk about in a few moments that come together to give the whole group their updates to make sure that we're synchronized and coordinated in all that we do. Also, we find that those nine groups, they have numerous subgroup meetings. For instance, law enforcement, since the beginning of May, since we're coming up on the event, has had a meeting every Tuesday at 10:30 with all the public safety entities. And that's really helped in the home stretch to kind of synchronize everything that we're doing to discuss issues that are still outstanding, how we're going to work through those issues. When you start to integrate numerous entities into a plan, that's complicated in itself. You'll see that our planning has been guided by the FEMA comprehensive planning process. And the next slide, I'll explain a little bit more to that. But to bring everybody together and to have them visualize how we're going to get from point A to point B, it's got to be synchronized, it's got to be coordinated, it's got to be easily understood, and it's got to be comprehensive in nature. And you'll see when we talk about the specific planning process that we're using, most of public safety is familiar with the National Incident Management System, NIM's planning, and the Incident Command structure. And it was very easy to bring our partners in, explain it initially, and have them start to build on that, and it really helped. And our participating partners, as Mike said, I can't say enough about the partnership. You know, it actually begins with the Board of Commissioners, funding and giving us the resources needed in order to support this. Because we all want the same thing. We want a safe, and we want a fun event. But when we talk about our partners, Board of Commissioners, County Manager, Cobb Police, Fire Department, Sheriff's Office, DOT, Drew and his team have been just extraordinary in helping us. IT with Kim Lee and her team. But you also see, we work very closely with MLB, the Braves, and a variety of other entities. Some of our business partners, the Chamber of Commerce, travel and tourism. They've all come together in various ways to make this a very unique and coordinated and integrated support module. Next slide, you'll see the FEMA P-planning process. And just briefly, again, it's easy to understand, and it's very comprehensive. It takes us all the way from the initiation of an act through the planning process, all the way around to the execution. And right now, we're in the monitoring phase. Whereas things change, events change, or certain problem sets arise, it's very easily to go back, reassess that, and use the P-planning process to figure out how we're going to address it. But more so than that, to get everybody a comprehensive understanding of what has changed and what that entails, and how that will impact them. Talk about our planning groups, you'll see that there's specifically nine. Starts with our communication and IT. Everything we do is about communication. We have researched, and we have various forms of technology that we're using down there that will not only help us operationally, but will also help us maintain management of the workforce. Public information and media coordination, traffic and transportation management. Currently, because of some of the safety concerns, we were able to get 147 barriers that we're using. They'll be placed in specific locations, and those barriers will separate high-density pedestrian areas from the roadway and vehicle traffic. And it sounds easy, but when you talk about getting them here in time, placing them, figuring out where to place them, the traffic management needed to place it, but also they have to be filled with water, coordinating that with the Fire Department. Just that one action takes a lot of moving parts. Documentation, EMS, medical services, logistic support, fire protection and safety, law enforcement, security, and our business and organizational stakeholders. When I said we had seven primary meetings, we've had actually more than that when we look at some of our community stakeholders, specifically tourism and travel that have worked with MLB to give additional updates, where we've had our community members present, other local government leadership there, just to keep them in the loop on what's going on. Progress to date. The event action plan's been finalized and distributed. And when I say finalized, as things change, we can go back and make those slight adjustments. Planning meetings have defined objectives and assessed risks. They built inter-agency coordination strategies and integrated input from MLB and venue business stakeholders. And I'll go back to that second point, built inter-agency coordinating strategies. Everybody sees it from different perspectives. But when you bring those perspectives together, it really makes us stronger. And I think that I speak for all the groups when I say that it's been, it's been a journey. We'll be glad when it's over, but it really has brought us closer in the network that we've developed. We'll pay dividends as we go forward in the future in other large-capacity events come to Cobb County. Tabletop exercises, very important. We did our first tabletop exercise April 17th, and that's when we focused on our county-wide coordination, bringing all of our county and local entities in. And we developed four different types of scenarios. How would we work through those scenarios? And it really makes you stop and think, yeah, if this happened, what would we do? What would we need? And the tabletop exercises were invaluable. And not only did we do the one for the county entity, but we, May 29th, MLB actually had one down at the TKE Building. And all the stakeholders were present for that. And it truly showed that all the planning that we had done thus far was paying off. Because, again, we had four different scenarios that could occur, everything from inclement weather to some other threats that may occur. And I think everybody walked away, when I say satisfied, they walked away having a certain amount of confidence that we were prepared for some of the things that may happen and would have not only prevented the measures in place, but also an effective response. Our current phase, minor EAP refinements, as I said, operational first responder training, we're actually doing that right now, today. We had the first training module yesterday. We had another training module today, and we'll have a third. we'll have a third one. And primarily, we're bringing everybody together to talk again about venue overview, responder roles, transportation and parking protocols, our major incident responses, but also there's some technology that we're using, as I stated, that helps us manage the workforce. We're actually able to use an app on our phone to see who is on the ground, where they're at, and we can break that down into the whole venue, or break it down into the various sections. And reinforcement of command and communication guidelines. When we talk about the ICS, the Incident Command Structure, you can see it here. When you look on the right, that's the structure, that's the structure every day that we would have for our events that's occurring either in the Battery, Truist Park area, or at the Galleria. Every day, you'll have a unified commander, and you'll have the different subgroups and sub commanders under that person. But we have a unique position, the MLB liaison. It's a one-stop shop. If anybody from MLB, the Braves, or even some of the other commands has an issue, there's one number that they can call. It'll always be answered. And that one single point of contact can reach out and start to address any issues that have been identified. MLB All-Star Week, ICS, we're going to have operational command centers in the areas of Truist Park, the Battery, Galleria, and we'll also have our mobile command unit in the area. We're utilizing technology-based systems to enhance safety and workforce management, as I've stated before. And all events plans to have, all event plans have been developed in continuous training and assessment are ongoing to ensure preparedness, as I stated. That's ongoing today as we speak. And I think the projected outcome for everyone is Cobb County is prepared to deliver a safe and successful 2025 MLB All-Star Week through BOC and Cobb Leadership Support, Comprehensive Planning, Focused Training Partnerships, and Interagency Cooperation. And with that, if you have any questions.
Yes.
And I'll have Deputy Chief Farrell and Director Maslin come up, and Deputy Chief Cohen, in case there's something I can't answer.
It's okay.
Well, thank you all three for your presentations. I've got a question for you, Director Register, on the barricades, the barriers. It's a three-part question, but when do you expect them to be placed? Will they impede any of our normal traffic? And how will we communicate with residents, workers, others in the area about that?
As part of our safety, our safety protocols and Commissioner, I would, I would like to, some of that information not be publicly broadcast on locations, but they will be put out prior to the events occurring. I don't think that they will be impeding traffic. What they will do is separate how the traffic from high pedestrian volume areas. And as we place them, certainly I think that we will work with some type of messaging through Ross. But our hope is that it's not going to hinder traffic, it's going to be a protective measure for the, the high-density pedestrian areas.
Thank you for that. Second question, with all of the organizations, companies in the area, is there a communication to ask them or work with them to have their employees work remote that week to reduce the amount of normal traffic in the area?
We have discussed that, especially in the meetings that Travel and Tourism has held. And of course, that is a decision that each private entity has to make. But the less people that are in the area, it, it assists in, in many ways. And if there's a, another answer for that from anyone, to include Ross, about asking entities if you can work remotely, great idea. We have put that out.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, are there any other questions?
Hey, Commissioner Allen, I'm sorry, Commissioner, Ross had additional information on that messaging.
Yeah, we, we've been talking with Cumberland CID, and they've been in contact with some of the businesses down there about that. We're hoping it's only for a short amount of time in a small area, but they have already discussed that with some of the companies.
Just a question on the app. Is that going to be solely for law enforcement?
Everyone that's involved in the endeavor of support will have the ability to have the app on their phone.
Okay.
There'll be slight restrictions. It will be mostly for command down there. And from a public safety standpoint, but there'll be other entities that will be authorized to have the app on their phone.
But it's not utilized by the general public, I guess, is just what I just want to clarification. Okay, thanks.
No, ma'am. It's restricted use.
Okay.
Is more of a comment than a, Commissioner Brol, did you have another question? Go ahead before I make my comment. Go ahead.
So the satellite, are they inside buildings spread out, or in just the one mobile unit? Or are they mobile? What can you say?
Oh, the command centers. We, we have the command centers, we have one, we have one primary command center in the Battery, in the Truist area. Then we have another primary in Galleria. But we also have our mobile command center that will be placed in the area, and that can transition whenever we need it as needed. But we have two stationary and one mobile. And then based on, you know, the events of the day, there may be, you know, some adjustments to that.
Okay. And then I know this falls under transportation, but Cobb County International Airport, are they going to do something similar to when the Super Bowl was in Atlanta with traffic coming in?
I'll speak from a public safety standpoint, and then I know that Drew is here, and he can, he can speak from a DOT perspective.
Drew had to step out, Director. Drew had to step out for a moment.
Okay. From a public safety standpoint, we're expecting a high volume of planes to be utilizing that airport. We're working not only with the Sheriff's Office and with the Police Department, but we're also working with Kennesaw PD, and we're working with our state and federal law enforcement partners to make sure that whatever we need to do to secure the airport, and also to control traffic there, just as we did during, during the World Series. We'll replicate that. But we're expecting actually a higher volume of traffic there. Does that answer your question?
That's great. Yeah, of course.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
A comment and then a question. It may go without saying, but considering this is an event that does have a lot of interest around the world, and there is a lot going on in the world, I'm presuming there will be a high level of vigilance for safety and coordination with our federal partners?
Yes, ma'am. As, as you stated, there's a lot going on currently. And, you know, public safety is, is what we're doing today, tomorrow, and in the future is very complex. As the operational environment changes, and we have to change with making sure that we have the capabilities needed, the operational protocols and responses needed. But we are working closely with our state partners and also our federal partners to, we just had a brief this past Sunday at 1700 about specific issues that involve law enforcement. But we're constantly assessing, we're constantly monitoring, looking at any type of intelligence that may come in that would dictate that we need to adjust in some form or fashion. But you are right. It is a very unique atmosphere that we're dealing with, and we try to react, react accordingly.
Okay, thank you. And then a little bit more on the light side. Mike may be able to help answer this. But can you talk about the activation of the Galleria during the event?
It's, well, 100% of it's coordinated and executed by MLB, but it's an event that's really for kids and families. The entire footprint of the Galleria is taken over by lots of interactive kiosks, many of them centering around the game, autograph sessions, just, you know, getting kids to get pretty active in things that deal with baseball, both fun and physical activity type things. So I know that, like you said, in the past, they've been incredibly well-attended, and it's something for, really for everyone.
Exactly. That's what I wanted to emphasize, that all of the county can be activated as part of this event. Baseball fan, or maybe less of one, that there is something to enjoy with the entire family, all ages.
For sure.
The Galleria is accessible to the public. Will the Battery footprint itself be accessible to the public also during this event?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the Battery's going to be activated as well and be part of the All-Star Village.
Great.
Yep.
Good. We look forward to this being a fun event for Cobb County and something that continues to put us on the map.
You bet.
Does anybody else have any questions? Dr. McMorris, I know you and your staff has been very involved in this. Just thank you for helping to get everything off the ground. Yep. All right. I believe this may close out our work session unless you have anything else to add, Director.
Just again, just thank you for the support, and thank the Braves for the integration and, and MLB, and all our stakeholders that have worked very hard to make this happen. Thank you.
Great. Not work, excuse me, our work session presentation. I know there's, we've got more meatier substance.
Want a new budget.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.